Policy Subcommittee Meeting, scheduled to begin at 5:00 PM tonight. We'll call the order to the meeting to order at 5:07. Again, thank you for your patience. We do ask that everyone who is here tonight, follow our guidelines, Executive Order for Masking, as well as follow along with our procedure where we do have some time for community comments at the end. But this is a working session and it's our hope for all folks who are here at the table, our voting members, to be able to focus in on our agenda item as noticed above. So I'll begin and ask everybody who is sitting at the table to go around and introduce themselves. My name is Melissa Boyd, member of the School Committee and Chair of the Policy Subcommittee.
Andrew Haddes, Attorney for the School Committee.
Kate Massenanti, School Committee Member.
Paula Ripford, School Committee Member, Chair.
Becky Davis, Community Member and parent of a SK graduate.
Thank you.
And a member of the Board of the Beloved Community.
Thank you.
John Dorfiedis, a member of the Beloved Community Board of Directors.
Thank you.
I'm Jesus Latoya, Member of the Beloved Community Attorney Board.
Thank you very much.
Frank Pallada, Interim School Superintendent.
Charity Shea, Director of People Personnel.
Thank you so much. And are you taking notes? Do we have a scribe? Thank you. I know that Raquel is not able to be here tonight, but otherwise we do have a full group and a core. Welcome. You're welcome to find a spot to sit if you like, and if you want to move a chair over, feel free. We will move to our next piece of business, which is accepting the minutes from 11:29. Folks around the table have a hard copy of that material if you want to take a look. And if there is any discussion, we can do that, but can I have a motion to accept the minutes from 11:29?
Okay. I'll second.
So we have a motion from Jesus and a second from Kate. Thank you so much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposition? None heard. Okay. So thank you for the accepting of those. We'll make sure they get filed in a timely manner. And moving on to our one agenda item for this evening is to look at our policy, and I'm going to share that up on this document and hopefully do my best to capture thoughts from folks around the table this evening. Our mission is, as part of this committee, is to review policies accordingly as they are presented to us, and as work needs to be done on them. And tonight, what I ask is that this working document has many comments in it, and that is based on feedback we've received through email or at the table or at these meetings from community members. And so because we have a limited amount of time, my hope is that we can find a way to agree as we move through sort of line by line to be able to say, these are the changes, or if changes are necessary, these are the ones that we are accepting. And that way, we end this evening with a document that we've reviewed in full. That is my hope for the time that we have. So if we can keep comments focused on that, I think that'll help us to be as productive as possible. Any other comments from around the table? So please let me know if I'm going too fast, if it's challenging for folks to hear, if you need something clarified. This is our current policy, as we saw it last week, beginning with goals of the policy. Some of the minor changes that are listed in the goal sections are adding in the word discrimination, I believe that hadn't been there, and looking at different identities to be more encompassing. I don't know if anyone wants to have conversation or comment on this close area. Seeing none, I will keep moving. We did have a request to make sure we had sort of a table of contents to organize this since it's a little bit more slightly lengthy policy. So that is my effort to do that, based on our petting. Any comments on that area?
Just go make that or find where you have contents highlighted. That's just because that section, that bulleted list, that's in full is new.
Yes. So anything that has been added currently for discussion purposes this evening is in yellow. Anything that was requested to be struck is, you'll see a strike through. Again, this is a working document for now that's open for discussion at the table. Moving to purpose, all the language remains the same as the original first read except adding in both discrimination and harassment from the title in that first yellow area. The rest remains the same. Just wanted to see if there's any comments on that. And we can certainly go back if something else that we talked about jogs a thought and you want to return. Philosophy, conversation about where this came from, remains the same, the end of page one. Again, if you're following along on paper, going to page two, nothing has been changed in that area. I don't know if there's any other comments or suggestions for folks who'd like to add or change anything. Forgive me. New computer to me. I'm trying, Charity. So scrolling down under Terms, Definitions, and this was some area of discussion last week where we looked at the specific definition of racism, and that was a request to potentially make a shift in change of language. One suggested striking the last three words, and then there were other definitions from the dictionary and other definitions provided by the team. I'm happy to shrink my screen and try to show those definitions in a moment, but wanted to open that up for conversation, suggestions of which definition would folks like to see go forward to the School Committee.
Can we see the different definitions that you?
Working on it. Let me go down to 75% to see if my comments get in there. Yep. So we have some alternative definitions are noted from the original, not original, but the second revision from the Merriam-Webster Dictionary, says, "The systemic oppression of racial group to the social, economic, and political advantage of another." Then there is an academic reference that says, "A system of advantage based on race involving cultural messages and institutional policies and practices, as well as the beliefs and actions of individuals." So we have three options for, as was originally written, the originally written with a revision with the strikeout, and we have two other options. So I just want to see where people weigh in on the definition for going forward. If anyone's drawing.
I just want to point out that that Merriam-Webster definition was changed in September of 2020. And I think if it's more inclusive, it's okay. I think that definition is okay.
The one that she had listed here is the one?
Merriam-Webster.
Yeah. And which one is that, the second one?
That right under my notes. Yeah. And you have it in hard copy, so it's easier to see. I know it's challenging to see on the screen.
Are there any comments in a lot?
Those are the only comments that I've received in writing. So in terms of making the change at the table, where are people weighing in? So I don't know if we want to just go around and say which definition we're most comfortable with, and then we can see if we can make a motion if we have some shared opinion of which definition we will keep in the document.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to, we just want to go around.
Sure.
I'm happy to go to suggest that the Merriam-Webster definition, because it's a, because this is a definition terms section, it only makes sense to me to use what is listed as the definition for the terms. And for racism in particular, personally, I feel that we should go with the dictionary definition of the word in this particular case because as we see as we go through and we get into specific forms and we bring in institutional racism, that's where it gets to be a more robust description and accurately reflect what's happened in a systemic light. So that's why I feel the word itself should be defined to dictionary term, and then when we move on and we have a larger, more robust institutional or interpersonal or cyber, it gets, it makes it a more robust.
Okay. Paula, do you want to weigh in?
So I'm gonna just refer to my notes here on my own personal copy, but I was going to suggest the Webster definition as well, and that's what I have to say.
For me, the Merriam-Webster definition works since we have, we go into specific definitions for interpersonal and institutional later in the document.
Okay, you're fine.
I'm good with that as well.
Okay. Frank and Charity? Okay. So if I am hearing you all correctly, and if someone wants to make a motion, making this official, that we will change the definition. Actually, I think we can just go for it as a working group and not have to do that yet, if I'm correct. We can do that at the end, so.
Yeah. I have a motion again.
Okay. So let me do this. And that way, we can see this on the screen here. And I will clean this up later, so it is, nope. Oh, it struck through. I got it. I'm gonna do that. And a strike through. Perfect. And we should be able to just strike through the rest. And that way, we have an accurate representation. Does that make sense? Okay. Perfect. And I will clean up any formatting issues that that causes a little bit later. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on, I did not receive any additional information on the remaining definitions. I will scroll through slowly, and then if folks want to pause and add or change anything, I will certainly go back to the item of your choosing. We did have one request to add a definition for microaggression. And if folks want to discuss or get a different one to review, you're welcome to do that. Any conversation on the definitions or, you know? Let me know if folks need a little more time. Okay. Moving on would be the section, page four at the bottom, Policy Regulations. And there are some additions. I did add one, so I'll explain my suggestion, and we can talk through it with the remaining items as well. Looking at the language of policy that also includes harassment, there was a line in this block in yellow that was from North Kingstown's policy that I thought encompassed anti-harassment as well as anti-discrimination, so suggested adding a similar block in that area. But that certainly would be reviewed by legal and have the opportunity to get feedback from this group, but that's why I added that particular piece in. That was a community comment that we received to try and make sure it's as inclusive as possible in, under all areas of the policy. And that goes on to page five as well.
Melissa, do you want to? That I would, that I, I feel like, so with A in the policy communications, policy communication, shared responsibility, I think one of the reasons why it seems the policy in and out of itself seems overwhelming in that times wordy is because it's a lot of repetitiveness. So for example, where we have listed, but it's not limited to racial motivated comments, microaggressions, and then it goes slurs, jokes, pictures, objects, etc. Microaggressions includes those, so I think, I think, and I know it seems like semantics, right? But at the same time, it's like, we're expecting, we're expecting people to abide by a very long document, so if it's possible to make it as concise as possible, and so when we have things that are being repeated, it just seems to me of making it more complex than it needs to be, right? So if you say microaggressions and then slurs, jokes, but if those are things that are part of microaggressions already, just to make it more concise and, and again, just a semantic type of thing, but when you're expecting people to read through a big, long policy and then they need to implement it, just to have it a little bit less wordy is easier for people to like, kind of like follow the bullet.
Okay. Other folks? Just gonna, I'm gonna swing around Becky and then Johnny. Yep. Whoever would like to go first. I'm just trying to keep it consistent.
I absolutely understand what you're saying, and I agree that we should try to avoid repetition. But in this particular case, the only two repetitive, the only two sort of repetitive items are smears. Actually, smears is it. So jokes, pictures, objects, threats, physical insults, or intimidation aren't included under the definition for microaggressions. So unless we restructure like the definition for microaggressions, I would be in, I would suggest that we keep those things there.
Other comments?
I would say this, Becky, because I was thinking that despite the length of a policy, there might be someone who picks it up and goes directly to that section, so they don't necessarily go back and read what microaggressions have to say. You know, it'd be good if they did, but I don't, I don't think that amount of repetition. I think it's very important to list those things so that someone sees that what it is.
Yeah, I don't see those things identified in the definition of microaggression, so I think it's important to be specific about what might be a microaggression someone may not know. You know, like the jokes, some people tell jokes all the time, and sometimes jokes are off-colored, and one doesn't really understand that it is, that it has a negative impact on another person. So I think that it's important to keep as much detailed information as we can, and I often do not see a whole lot of repetition.
Any other comments? So sort of hearing that and seeing where we are, we have the folks saying, for the most part, to maintain the document, one suggestion to edit, but if we're fine with moving on with it where it currently is, then we can go to the next section. Okay? The same thing, if the body feels like you want to strike the part in yellow or have that part reviewed because that's new, feel free to do that. That was just a suggestion to add in some additional language, but if it's making it too long, I'm fine with that. Does anyone want to comment on that part because I know it's new? And that's taken directly from other, other school policies as something to consider that I didn't see fully that was in our document.
All I see is that the word they witnessed needed spacing between them. That's about it to me.
Where is that?
That's one, two, three, four, seven line down, or third from the bottom, and it's the fourth, third, fourth.
That's still under A.
Bottom of page four. Is it in the yellow or the?
The yellow, the yellow.
I can't see up there though.
Maybe it's my document.
No, no, no. But it's not showing up there. Scroll a little bit further, I think.
Scroll a couple more lines. I'm going.
There you go.
Oh, there you go. Perfect. I'm sorry. Took me a second to get there.
That's all I see. I, again, I think it's important to understand that it's a little bit like with Child Protective Services, you know, if you see something or know something, you're obligated to say something, and if you don't, well, then you're liable of the person claiming the claim. So I think it's an important addition.
Moving on, in section B, again, just harassment was added, again, reflecting the full name of the policy. C and D, there were no suggested changes. E just reflects the full name of the policy. There was some conversation about how and why this, where this might be put forward and, and working with different employees, the unions, others, how this might go forward, but I know we received some feedback that that might not be possible, there might be some limitations on there. I don't know if anyone wants to speak to that or add to that piece?
I mean, I think the only way we can do that is if we go into negotiation with them, right? So we can't, so as far as if we want this policy passed on the 14th, we're not going to go into negotiation between that and that. So that could be something to put up until I get to do, and if it's discussed with union body during negotiation times, but I think if you want to move the policy forward, then...
Because that is happening. We are going into negotiation relatively soon, but not.
But not until like February, I think.
Right.
So.
And that's not with both unions, and that's just with the agency.
That's just with, yeah, yeah. So that could be added to like the, the to-do list going forward and be part of negotiations.
Yep. Okay. Feel free to adjust. Same thing in terms of working with SKPD, there might be limitations on what we can say or ask, and is that correct? I'm looking at Andrew and just making sure we're wording that correctly.
Yes, that, I mean, we can't obligate this department or the divestments out of the unions without going through negotiations to do that, so I think we'll put a plan instead of striking them.
Okay. Any other comments in that section? Moving on, Leadership and Administration talks about the need to conduct an equity assessment, and if I'm not correct, I'll defer to Paula on this, but I know that was something that was in our prior RFP or opportunities to have that conversation. So I don't think there were any changes discussed about that. That's something that was in the original policy. No changes. Moving on to page six for number two. Number three, talked about comments we received about broadening, instead of naming one specific particular strategy, broadening what those strategies were, defining them as non-violence, comment form techniques, de-escalation, et cetera. So that was a suggestion that we received to make that a little bit broader, open to conversation. Yes?
I just wanted to point out that key and non-violence is used all across the country as a term. You could put the word kini back in there.
Okay. Are folks supportive of that around the table?
So I'm supportive if we use the term such as for, for the very reason that we don't want to suggest that it is the only method. So if we put such as, and again, if we look even, and I'll jump in ahead to B, but where it struck such as, again, the such as, I think having key and non-violence is acceptable there, as long as it's such as, it's an example of. But there are other things that can be used.
No, I wasn't saying it should be the only one. I was just suggesting putting kini back in that word, where it says such as, and then trauma informed.
Like that, Johnny?
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I think so.
Yes. Okay. We just highlighted that's a change, potentially, and again, around the table, if folks don't want me to edit that in, let me know, but I'll try and capture that as we're typing.
Yes, sometimes.
And that's in there in three. Where are you referring to, Kate?
So three, down in B.
Okay, let me scroll down to there. So if we're good with three, there are no changes in A. B, I highlighted, I don't know why I highlighted provided. Let me see if I, that might have been me highlighting it, and maybe that's an old note. So what were you gonna say on B?
So on B, it was just to where you have it struck out such as kini non-violence, because such as is there, it's, it makes sense to keep kini non-violence there.
Okay. So are folks fine with me removing that strikeout?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. I know this is a little painstaking to get through, but.
Not that it's unnerveing for you to have everybody watching.
And it's not by mistake. Thank you to Charity for letting me use it, so I'm doing my best.
It's a technological wizard.
I'm grateful that we had our tech team and other folks support us today to make it possible. Let's remove that. Beautiful. And I'm just gonna take out my comment here because I'm not sure why that is there anymore. Been looking at the document too, too much. Okay. It's not letting me get rid of my highlight.
So I think it's related to that comment. That's a comment, it's not a highlight, right? So it just added, it's basically, you're asking how?
How we can do that, and we can go back and have that conversation on the floor. So, okay. So if that is fine for now, let me just take out the extra spacing of there. Looking at C, this is the conversation of organizing something in each of the schools, a social justice and equity committee. So there's some repetitive language in there, formerly BIPOC Advisory Committee Board, and wanted to have some conversation about that. And I know I had heard from several folks that they liked the idea of a group in, from each school potentially being able to be a source of support for information or resources on these issues. So open that to conversation as I make some edits.
I'm confused about why did school people want to be involved, we took out that part.
In terms of the Advisory Board piece?
Well, taking out, taking out all of that.
I was just trying to leave it as broad as possible that we could define who those individuals are at a later time, and it might be different from school to school, but to be determined. If others want to weigh in, what the cleanness language is, feel free.
So the only concern that I had with having this in policy is that, that they're building level directives, and if we're requiring by policy that each school has these committees, if the committee, if there's no one at the school taking up the charge to have that committee, then we're in violation of policy. So now we're giving our building, we're giving our building level directives, and if nobody's there to do it, we're in violation of the policy. So then it's kind of like, it should be a school, to me, it should be a school-based policy, and it should be a school-based option. Like at the high school, we have, they have the ability to create clubs and have groups and organize, you know, SK Wellness and our peer-to-peer groups and our, say, Bay Club that's kicking off right now. So it should, it can be a suggested group, but to dictate it by policy sets us up for, you know, at elementary school, at Wakefield, at Broad Rock, if they don't have a committee, if people aren't engaging in the committee, then we're in violation of the policy. If that makes sense.
I think that's why the Advisory Board has suggested that they be involved because maybe they could help round out the people that would make up the committee.
I think just to clarify, this one was not the student group. This was among administrators, building leaders, similar to the process that we went through with Dr. Pallada and filling those other policy or groups of, there would be a call to say if folks wanted to serve, again, to make it as open and equitable as possible. I think that's my impression. If Dr. Pallada or Andrew want to weigh in on how something like this might work, and how do we word it in policy, if you have any suggestions?
Again, from a legal perspective, broader is always better, so the strikeout here to me doesn't obviously negate any of these students or staff or members of the BIPOC Advisory Board from being a member of these committees, but it doesn't limit that either. That's the way I read it as.
And I specifically struck out BIPOC Advisory Board because that name is different now, so.
And that's the other thing.
If the name changes.
Exactly.
I, I'm thinking that.
I, I'm thinking that any kind of groups that are formed, are, are being formed because of what someone or several people believe in, and so they form this group, and they get people to support them, and, and then, you know, they bring their concerns forward. So however, I think that schools should certainly, we should be certainly encouraging our kids to speak it up, to speak up for what they believe in, but not saying in a policy that they have to do, because it has to be something that is, is coming from, to me, your heart, you know? If you strongly believe in something, you're going to go out there, and you're gonna find the people that believe in the same thing as you do, and you're gonna go and advocate and fight for it. So, um, I guess I agree with Kate, that it shouldn't be in a policy that's saying we must, what we must do is encourage our young people to advocate for what they believe in, and sometimes that starts outside of school, you know, it stops in the community. So I hesitate to have it in a policy for that reason, I, I want kids to be encouraged by what they say they believe in, the things that they have been questioned about, et cetera.
So just to clarify before we go around, I think we're also sort of getting into D as well, where that talks about, I'm sorry, let me scroll down a little bit. You know, it's a different section. So again, this is more from the lens of an administrative level way to impact programming, way to address concerns, a, a way for individuals to have the pulse of the needs of the school and share that forward with central administration, so this piece isn't the student piece, but wanted to clarify that. Becky will go around again.
Okay. So I just wanted to add here that I think the strength of this, this piece in the policy has to do with creating a body that can help inform blind spots in the administration of this, because we all know that the part of the reason why the beloved Community Advisory Board became part of the district is because there's a lack of representation in the administration levels at the school, in the, the teachers, faculty, staff at the schools, and so having this body that can help let school administration know, okay, these are the things that, that are hurting children of color, or children of, of different, of different ethnicities or identities, and this is what you can do about it. If we don't have anyone that is an expert in that field, then how are those needs going to get addressed? So I definitely understand the desire to have a policy that's enforceable, but I, might we consider having a single individual body that then has subcommittees that are sort of devoted to each school, so that folks know where to go. It's much easier to join a group that's existing, rather than, you know, to start one from scratch. So, you know, having a district-level committee, and that's what I'm saying, is having a district-level committee, having some groups within that committee that's specific to each school, so that people will have other members of that community that are specific to the schools, because that, like, each school is different. So the, so the needs of each school should be addressed individually, and have pe- having folks that, that students and families of color can trust and go to when there's an issue, I think it's really, it's really important.
So what, and, and is popping into my head, Dr. Plata, is our school improvement teams, because each of our schools are required to have a school improvement team, and right now we're refining what each school improvement team is responsible for, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm wondering if that's exactly where, because that is what, that is the school improvement directive, and if I'm also not mistaken, in what is being developed with our new school improvement team, verbiage also includes what we're talking about right now, so I'm wondering if that's where that falls, and the new policy's under there versus in, in here, or we could refer to, from here, refer to the school improvement team?
Yeah, I, I think the only standing committed by law is a school improvement committee. That, that certainly can spin off into a subcommittee of a school improvement team, but it would be the school improvement teams to make that decision, as opposed to imposing something on the school improvement team. I, the whole idea of a school improvement team is, is to have the autonomy to drive their school in a direction that's gonna be better for everybody. And within that policy, it speaks to, you know, diversity and having equal representation on those committees, and if they decided to have that, then that's their, their choice to have it. My only, my only further comment would be is, if, if the school did not organize a social justice and equity committee, and there's a violation, what would be the protocol or the procedure if there's a violation? Does it go before that committee, or does it go before the school improvement team, or does it go to the district, or the principal? It just raises a lot of questions.
Okay. I'm gonna go back and go back around the room and see if we can come to a place of where we move C after enough, all the input is here.
Well, first of, first of all, I think it's a creative idea about the school improvement committees, but they haven't done anything in 2015 about decisions, who I don't think they were in. Secondly, I just want to tell you how this particular paragraph was, was arrived at. Because we know that it will take a long, long time to change curriculum, and because students suffer under the current curriculum, we thought that maybe encouraging some kind of cultural appreciation and other educational opportunities could be organized by such a committee. My suggestion might be to say that each school would be encouraged to organize that kind of a committee, and then, and then go with what it says, because we all came up with those things, and we thought they were important.
Okay?
And, you know, when you make things so broad, it, it becomes irrelevant, it becomes not worth it, when something is so broad, then, then the, the forces that exist will continue to do the same thing they've been doing. So if we have continuously ignored the needs of students of a social, socioeconomic level, for example, and we don't ask them to come participate, they're gonna continue to be ignored, and the people who are going to participate are going to be the people who are the status quo, and so nothing will change if we don't ask other people to, to sit in here, if we're not specific, but say, hey, we need some students in here. You know, otherwise, you know, the students don't have to be represented, because it's so broad, and I think being specific is important to, to get into where we, this policy wants to get to, and wants to get to some, a place of social justice and equity, and so that's why I think it's important to be specific, and not so broad, that it, it's diluted, that's the word I was looking for, it's diluted, that, that, you know, that these people will never, never be represented. I know that growing up poor, you know, and we didn't have a word, it's because we were poor, you know, we were too busy doing other stuff, and we're never asked to participate, because, you know, it's over with, I never felt included, and so I think if we make people feel included, they will take on exactly what you were saying, talking about, Paula, be feeling encouraged to participate. Otherwise, it's, why, it's the same old thing, I'm not gonna do any, they're not gonna do anything, it's not gonna change, why bother? And it's that why learned helplessness is what we're trying to overcome, I think, with this policy.
I do see a hand, we're gonna do community comments in a little bit, so please hold on to that, I'm sorry to pause. Any other from the table?
Yeah, I, I would just like to throw in there, and this is my lens, so it's what I always think about, but when I think about, you know, if we keep it broad, then we're including everybody, whereas if we start naming specific groups, we haven't represented CLAC, so if this is an anti-discrimination policy, we need to make sure that there's not discrimination, you know, that we're, we're addressing it for all populations, and I would, I don't see that represented here, so, so I think that if you keep it broad, then it does include everybody and being welcomed at the table, if we start naming specific groups, I feel like that almost leaves some people out of the invitation.
But the specific groups that are being named are students, faculty, staff, stakeholders, members of BIPOC, and I, that, it's, it's not...
I think that's, I was gonna, as you were talking, I was gonna ask you, how does this encourage, because it, because students are all our students, and so it's the same thing at the, at the, like, at all different levels that you go to, is you always go to the meetings and you see all the same people at all the same meeting? It's, it's the same with our student groups, you go in, you see all the same students at all, on all the different committees. How do we, staff, so when we say, consisting of students, faculty, staff, and stakeholders, it's, it, it is broad, those are still broad, even though they're specific, I don't know that, that makes much sense, but, because it's all of our students, and so we're, we aren't, we aren't, we aren't specifying, so I don't know how adding those is making it more specific when each of those, that's, those are, we're just describing the broader population.
Any other additional comments, and we'll see if we can get somewhere on this?
I think the only other comment I have is, I like, and I looked at him after you said it, because he had also, I had said it, instead of saying shall organize, to suggest, um, to encourage, or to me, even the schools could, could organize it, and then encourage people to come to it, versus the, my only concern is, is you're forced to create a committee, you make the committee, you can name, and then there's nobody who joins it, or, you know, so it, it really is, it's just a matter of how do you enforce this level of participation with these people.
So just some recommendations about C, to clarify, are we looking at the district-level recommendation that might be part of the school improvement process, or not, are we looking at a school base, so do we have a preference for this piece, district or school level?
I mean, I tend to lean towards district level, only because, only because if we're putting it on the onus of each of our, our, the whole, the hierarchy of the schools, like, what, two years ago changed, and where it's the building principals are in charge of their own buildings.
Okay.
Right, and so the, and so if it comes from the district level to say, to fall down, it's different, it's different than if we go and tell each school that it's gonna be tied.
Do you have a preference, Paula?
I'm thinking district, as well.
Becky? If you wanna skip and pause, feel free, I'm just trying to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak. Okay.
So you're saying that it would, it would, the wording would be something like, the district encourages each school?
Well, we could certainly approach this piece just like we set up with the same process that we use to form all of our other committees, okay? We could put it out there for the whole district of students, and, you know, from the middle school and up, maybe, you know, and, and we put that out there, and we say, we are going to form, we're looking to form this committee. It'll be a lot of interest, have people come in, the people will, you know, see what they're interested in, what they potentially want to go to the free black table, and then it moves through, just like this, the, the book, you know, what we're doing, like, process, because you wanna make sure that you're doing everything in the legal fashion of forming a committee, especially because you expect this committee to have hands-on with inside their schools, and keeping our interest from that angle.
I still, I still believe it has to be each school, because it's not, it's suggesting, it's, it's a place that, that has the opportunity to suggest these other cultural appreciation experiences for students and faculty, it's a helpmeet for those students and faculty, and that's one of the reasons that the beloved Community Advisory Board suggested that there be a presence like that. If it's, if it's a district-wide thing, how is anybody gonna know about it?
I mean, you, anybody can put together and organize their own group, or committee, or advisory board, or whatever that is, they wanna call theirselves, but when it comes to the school district, there's, there's a line there, you know, because what...
From the district, what you're not considering...
I'm, I'm, I was saying that we wanted it to be a district-wise, a, a, a committee that is affiliated with the school district, that is the process it needs to follow. Other than that, people can be, feel free to form whatever committee groups or whatever they want to, on the outside, and certainly bring recommendations to school committee members when it comes to certain topics. However, there's a line as to what we're allowed to do legally, that's, that's all I'm trying to clarify there. I, I don't want us to get into some murky waters here, putting together a committee and then committing, us here committing to something that is not legal.
But when I, when I made the suggestion about inserting the words to encourage, it looked like it was legal.
To encourage, and, and again, coming from the district, so the other issue that with having it meet each school, if Wakefield Elementary School, if it's, if it's on the school level, Wakefield Elementary School might not have one, PSL might, Westdienst might not, Mattoonik might, if it's at the district level, then all of the schools are under it, you, you, does, does that make sense in a way?
Sort of, except that I don't think it's very accessible.
But it's also not equitable, if you, if you, if you tell the schools, okay, go do this, and some schools do it, and some schools don't, that, which is what we're faced with on a daily basis in our district anyway. Mattoonik has things that PSL doesn't have, Westdienst has things that, that Mattoonik doesn't have, it's, it's, one of our biggest problems, and that's one of the biggest reasons why we're all in the room, is our schools are not equitable, especially our elementary schools. So by putting it and saying, okay, schools, you go and do, we, we don't have a control over what they're gonna do, but if it's coming from under the district umbrella, then you say, okay, all seven of our schools fall under this, versus, you, you school, you go do this, you school, you go do this, but they're all gonna do something different. We run into it all the time, which is why I was discussing this.
Are you saying that it would be stronger if the district is...
I feel that it would be, and again, using the word encourage, because I, there could be, and again, it could fall under the school improvement, and I understand what you're saying about the school improvement team, but there are big changes that are moving forward with our school improvement team, just like they are happening, we're trying to make happen now, so...
And I'll add, I know that school improvement team policy is coming to this table very soon, and that will be something that we weigh in on as a group, so they have an opportunity there. I'm, I'm curious for the sake... I'm curious, for the sake of timing in this body and getting through the other items, it seems like we're saying there should be some method to do this and that we'd like it to be inclusive of multiple stakeholders and that we have some ways to do that. We can refine that method later, but I'm just asking, does this stay? Does C stay as currently written or is it struck to go forward for next week? Can we agree that we'd like to keep this to be able to move the policy forward to then? Certainly, things will be debated on the floor, things will be added, or we could refine and make this stronger at a later date. I just wanna make sure we get through all of this tonight.
And people who are concerned about that particular part will have a chance to talk about it later, right?
Yes. Yep. That would be my suggestion, just to make sure we get through the rest of it, as folks are here and I assume waiting to share too.
So I just wanna reiterate, so added "encouraging" to that, is that what's going on?
Yes, I put "the district is encouraged to organize a standing social justice and equity committee" as what was currently written.
I do have a question about that. So I thought that you were saying that the district was encouraging schools to organize committees. The problem that I have with the district, the district is encouraged, is that there's a lack of accountability. Like, the district can do it, or the district, but it doesn't have to. So if the "encourage" goes to the district, encourages schools to do that, I feel like that the district, as it stands, and we can get into this later, but as it stands, the district has to make the body, like, it exists in the district's body. And then, it's encouraged, the district then encourages schools to have their own individual committees.
Okay, so with that change, is that more clear from your opinion?
Yes.
I just wanted to suggest into what you're saying there. So, in other districts, they have, you know, groups, the CDI groups, like, I would encourage you, or anybody that wants to see this communication, to do a little dig in and figure out how these groups form, how they collaborate with the schools in the district, so that there's continued collaboration, there's solutions and resources that are all being merged together and there's that solid collaboration. I'm saying this because this is a vision that I have. Like, I would like to see this communication within our district, in our community. And we figure out how we get that collaboration there. So that as a group, we can be a source of holding both kind of to the policy, if that makes sense. So, and this is just my brainstorm of how we can have our community and, you know, the schools collaborate in a way that is going to be solid, legal, and beneficial to the community and the students in the community.
Oh, I hear you say that. I feel like that's why we're here. That's what we're doing. Like, working as a community to offer, like, the knowledge that we have from lived experience to help the district realize its goals of, you know, being a more inclusive and safe space for all students. I feel like that's why, that's why we're here.
I think that's why folks are invested in the work and want to, I think we share that common goal. And being able to, in echoing Paula's statements, find a way that these systems that are created in policy, in programs, in education are sustained. Because some of us will change around the table in time and I think the hope is not two or three years down the road to be starting at square one again. So I think that's our collective hope. We might be coming at it in different directions, but to get there, that we can have something solid, is, I think, the hope. So, we have some more work to do. Maybe we can look to other districts for some guidance. Maybe we can ask for some additional opinions. But this is something, again, we can refine and get input on when folks speak tonight to be able to move on. If we're okay with that for now. Okay. Looking a little bit further down, item D at the end of page six, no changes. Talked about how we share this out with students. And then we go into curriculum and instruction. We have some conversation in here of making the language a suggestion from a committee member to make it as inclusive as possible. Again, looking at all aspects of different identities. So highlighting BIPOC is listed there, but also other underrepresented populations. I think that's the only change that was requested there. Same thing with B, listing identities specifically, and C, listing anti-discrimination to echo the name of the policy. So wanted to pause and let people reflect on curriculum as well. I'll scroll down to the other ones in a moment, but just so everybody can see what we're talking about.
So in item A, I see that we struck BIPOC is from in front of community. So why, can you repeat why that changed specifically?
It looks to me like the comment on the side here, should it only be individuals identifying as BIPOC? Or could it be more inclusive and broader, as she suggested? Because it is limited and there are other groups under the full policy that we're looking to make sure that it are included. That's how I'm reading it, anyway.
That's how I read the comment as well, but she's not here to talk about it.
I see that comment up there. I absolutely agree with the comment. But if we just strike BIPOC without replacing it with this very, like, specific inclusive language and we just add community, community community, and it doesn't, it doesn't determine that it's a diverse body, that it's a diverse community. So can we add some language in there that motions towards the fact that we want representative members of the community that are diverse?
If I kind of echo what was before, and other underrepresented, if we remove, kind of go back to that, that could be a way to both highlight and add to, potentially, if that makes sense? Again, if it's an issue on special education, as Charity was talking about, how do we make sure, there certainly could be members of the BIPOC community represented and we wanna make sure it's inclusive of specific needs if we're making policy around that.
I do wanna point out that the Beloved Community does have representation from other groups, not just racially based.
Excellent. That is true. I am aware of that. Thank you for sharing that. Okay? Other comments or questioning A, B, or C?
This language in the school improvement team policy, you might wanna consider under that section. Says that each school improvement team shall be composed of the principal and appropriately balanced number of teachers, educational support employees, students' parents, and other business community members who are representative of the ethnic, racial, and economic communities served by the school.
Beautiful. So we could mirror those sections as we go further, to be, again, have our policies mirror each other and be as inclusive as possible. Suggestion there. I'm gonna scroll down if I'm...
Charity, she can write anything she wants to write.
Sorry, how's Charity's name?
How are you doing that?
It had a line in before. It wasn't all for me, but it's whoever's typing, so. Under D and E, if you want me to edit it after you've cut it out. So nothing changed in D and E, and then we go down to, unless anyone wants to make any comments on D and E?
What happened to C?
C is looking at specifically, struck the name of the BIPOC advisory board, since the name is different, and looked at that relationship because it is not currently defined. So we were asking for some guidance on what the appropriate rules were for advisory groups in the future. And I don't think we have that information to go forward for the 14th.
But is it not in there?
Yeah, we could take it out, but not in there.
So does anyone have a suggestion then?
My only suggestion is so, in relation to any sort of external board that's not under the purview of the district, the only thing that I see as a potential problem going forward, and I bring up these problems not because of the existing people who sit on any boards, but more looking forward and trying to eliminate unintended consequences, which is how a lot of issues... Someone recently used that example, like, the intent of Facebook, when it was intended, certainly didn't, the intention wasn't to completely manipulate and orchestrate, like, social chaos, but that was the unintended consequence. That's where we are, right? So again, with this, with this, I wanna make sure that we don't create unintended consequence where we're listing specific groups. If, and to Melissa's point, if the members of that group change and there's no oversight as to who they are, then they get to dictate what's happening? And what if it's a different group of people who don't have credentials, qualifications, you know what I mean? So if their education, need the word "education liaison" or "experienced education liaison" or "culturally experienced education liaison" or something, so that you know specifically someone who has the actual credentials to speak to whatever, whatever's gonna go forward? Does that make sense?
Well, the Beloved Community was formed by the district, so we're not really...
The Beloved Community was formed by...
The, by the South Kingston Board of Directors. They asked for it to be done.
Right, but did it go through this, like, the similar way that we set up all of our subcommittees, where people put in applications and their qualifications are, I don't recall doing that? Was the qualifications are reviewed and appointments were made? Or was it just, like, the Beloved, or at the time it was BIPOC advisory committee was created and then people just joined? I'm not sure how that happened.
Well, I was invited specifically, invited by administrators.
Okay, were all the members, and nobody's changed since then?
Things have changed. People have changed. A lot of the committee members have changed.
So there were interviews, appointments, things of that nature happened with the board?
I was not interviewed, no, but I was asked, so I guess it's been at that point.
Okay. Again, not questioning your credentials, but going forward, if you all of a sudden are no longer on the advisory board and then someone else comes in to take your seat, how do we know that their credential...
And this is why I'm asking.
Yeah. I think that's why, like, I mean, am I way off base?
No, you're, no, I mean, it's an area that's currently in dispute, which is, I think, why the chair of the policy subcommittee said at this point in time, we don't have a legal answer to the type of entity that the BIPOC advisory board now, as I understand it, the Beloved Community Advisory Board, of what type of entity that is, what its legal requirements are, there is not an answer to that question right now. I don't know when there will be. Hopeful that it would have been by now, but it's not. And so what are the steps we need to do? It's, we're waiting on a decision. From the Attorney General's office.
I wanted to ask, is it similar to the CLAC group, which I forget what it all stands for, but it's...
A CLAC group is, yeah, a CLAC group is created through the special education regulations. It's a little bit different. They're required by law to have a CLAC group. So the question I think that you're all struggling with is, what's the makeup of the Beloved Community Advisory Board who oversees it, who chooses the members? What are their legal requirements as far as the Open Meetings Act and those sort of things? We just don't have an answer to that question right now.
And if I'm not mistaken, CLAC doesn't have, like, CLAC doesn't write policies?
We weigh in on it. You know, we certainly can provide feedback, but no, we don't craft policies.
They force the policies, they're already set in place by law.
Right.
That's what CLAC does.
I don't know if that's better or worse, but...
So based on where we are tonight for C, do we have any recommendation to move this forward?
So I think, I guess clarification, right? So clarification is, if we want to move forward with this from a legal perspective and we, which is why you have that struck out. If we move forward with what is not struck out, then we know we're okay with moving this, that this can go on the 14th and move forward for adoption. Versus if we leave that in, we run the risk of it not qualifying.
You're more at risk with the language that's not struck out, you said this correctly, being included.
Gotcha. So if we want the policy in full to have a good, we'll say, teeth moving forward with it struck out?
Correct.
Can folks around the table support that, or is there any of our language that you want crafted in C? And again, we can revise and revisit policy. That is the beauty of, this isn't a one-time conversation. We can return to it if need be.
We can, we only can return to this question of what's crossed out here when the set rule is provided all that information that we're talking about. Like, because again, it has to be legal. Everything about it has to be legal. And so, I'm gonna go with, we leave it crossed out for now and we move forward with this policy. And in the event that such rule forms again, they form it in a manner where they're doing everything legally. Because to me, that's what protects the district. It protects our students. Because that's what we should be doing. And so, these policies have to reflect just that. That we're taking care and we're protecting our students. And as you all can say, this policy is a long time coming, right? And so now, tonight, we're here with the ultimate goal to bring it back to the post-school committee and get it passed. We're not gonna agree on everything, but we can agree that we need to get a policy passed. And so, there's some things that just can't stay in this policy as it's waiting tonight.
Any other comments on C?
Well, we're gonna strike that stuff. Okay, so I'm thinking all curriculum should be examined for racial, cultural, and other discriminatory bias against protected class by the district's director of curriculum. All right? So the word "examined" to me is just so, so vague. You know, okay, well, we're gonna look at it, check, we're done. All right, so if we want to put some teeth in it, then, you know, to make sure that it does do that, then we have to put some verbiage that says that, okay, be examined and enforced. I don't know. What does the legal department think about that? How would we word that?
If I understand your question, and if I'm reading correctly, I think the second sentence, I'm reading that two-pronged, right, so the curriculum's examined. And then the next sentence says the district will revise the present curriculum to reflect. So, and I may be misunderstanding, that's the way I'm reading it, is that you have the examination, that if issues are found, that second sentence directs the district to revise it.
I see that.
Not yet, but...
And I think a little bit of the teeth comes in too prior to that in the leadership and administration section where we have the equity assessment done. And so I think that, I don't know, pre-loads that ability... And so, I think that, I don't know, pre-loads that ability to make the revisions. Again, have a little bit more teeth.
John, did you want to add?
I just noticed some language below this that I thought might work up here. And it might work just in that first sentence. That it should be examined, et cetera, by the district director of curriculum. And the beloved advisory board would be available to vie, or whatever, yeah.
Okay. Are folks comfortable with me writing that in, or does that go back to the issue that you were bringing up?
So, you're saying, wouldn't it be making policy, just like?
Yeah, would be.
I mean, I think, if I understand what, what Ms. Whitford's saying, I, I, I do understand your thing, your, your position about watering it down so much that nothing changes. I, I do, I understand that. I, I mean, my, my take on that would be that the beloved advisory board has the ability to approach the school committee or the policy subcommittee or the administration at any point in time and point out inequities or issues that they see in the curriculum or anything like that, without having to necessarily write it into policy. I think, you know, my concern from my perspective then becomes sort of what, what Nishay was saying, if we identify this group has the ability to do that, does identifying only that one group mean that another group doesn't? Or does that, does each group have an ability to take a look at the curriculum, whether it's CLAC, just because we're using that as an example, as opposed to the beloved community advisory board? But I say that understanding your, your, your earlier statement about if we water it down so much that what is it really saying?
I mean, everybody, I mean, the curriculum is, is, is a public document. So, everyone has that opportunity to look at it.
Because of these meetings and climate on it, you have proof of change.
You make suggestions, but it, I mean, that's a right that you have as, with documents. It's, it's not saying that you cannot look at it and make a suggestion. It's just to be a group that is asking for hands-on. It's, it's just not the way that, it's, it's, it's not processed. That's, that's all I'm trying to say here. I, I, I think the process of how we do things remains, that needs to be what remains important in the end, is the process and the steps that are being taken to get to the results of the end process. And so, I, I'm just going to keep going right back to the process if I have to, but that's, that's where we're at, where we're there.
For the sake of time and looking at this, what I am going to recommend is, again, listening to our advice, is that we have what is written here, and if folks want to weigh in on the document, members of the, the voting committee, please do so. Again, if we pass this tonight, we have the opportunity to continue to make some recommendations that legal will review before it goes to the floor. And when we hear community comment, if there's other folks who want to weigh in, that way inform us of other suggestions. So, if, if folks are okay, we can keep moving. Okay. And I know we're at six twenty-one, my hope would be to be closed at six thirty, that may not be the case. So, we will work our way through the document and then open up to, to comment. So, for folks who stay with us, thank you for your patience. If you are unable to, you are also welcome to, to send information in writing, and, and I will of course stay as well, if folks want to have a conversation. So, D and E, there were no changes. Unless anybody would like to add any? And if not, then we move to Training, which is on the bottom of page seven. Okay, looking at language of being able to participate in Training. I, I personally looked at model and embody because I wasn't sure how to enforce that or what that would mean. I was looking for something a little more specific, so I put in Training. But, and on an annual basis was my addition as well. But for A and B, if folks want to comment on that, we also took out the wording, the same, the same reasons as well, to avoid that issue. And I can scroll a little bit more so you can see the rest of the, that nothing else was changed there.
Do we, are we able to mandate that school resource officers have training if they don't technically work for us? I know they would.
No, I, I would, I, I don't want to speak definitively, I don't know, but I would, I would assume that when we, we, and actually Dr. Ploddy would be able to probably speak to a better than me, I would assume when, when we partner with someone, we say these are things that need to be taken care of. If you're going to partner with us, I would assume that they would have to have some sort of training to be a school resource officer, never, you know. I know that's a assumption, I apologize.
There's typically a memorandum of understanding between the school department and, and SRO, or what, what I should say. So, that's certainly something that you could include, go, so, it's similar to the collective bargaining that you talked about earlier. I'm not saying it's, it would be fair, but I think that's something you have to talk to them about.
Okay, so something we can clarify. Okay. I'm scrolling on to page eight. And I can, if, going back to C on the top of page eight, if you want me to remove the strike on Kenji and not, based on the same things we've already talked about, I can do that. So, it says such as, and then added some other content that we heard from folks that they'd like to have added to give some more examples in there. And then it talked about who's presenting this. Again, it named a specific advisory group, so removed that.
The only thing I suggested in that, and again, semantics, so we may not move it in it, I'm just wasting time now, but the first staff meeting of the year presented by the building administration, is that's who gives back. So, if you wanted specific, like who's going to do that? Because as it stands with nobody being specified.
So, that gives it some ownership that someone is supposed to do it?
Yeah, that they have to do it, instead of it just being, oh, this needs to be done, and then who's, who's doing it.
Okay, and others could potentially join, I assume, representation from this committee, et cetera, but it gives it, someone is responsible for it? Okay. I'm going to keep scrolling. Policy enforcement, A and B, no changes on the bottom of, let me check the page, page eight in the middle. No changes proposed there. Unless anyone would like to add to them? And then C talks about, the question was for budget. Raquel's not here to ask it specifically, but resources shall be set aside for budget. And I, I believe that's being echoed in whether it's a school improvement team, it's our strategic planning pieces we'll hear about on Tuesday night. So, I don't know from Dr. Plodda if you feel like that's appropriate to keep that in there, because I know that's part of the discussion, is how do we fund these things going forward? Any comments on C or? I'm comfortable with it being in there, but I just want to make sure others are. As we talk about, for example, doing the audit, which I know we already have an RFP for, like, we are saying we're going to fund some of these pieces.
What is Raquel's, is she asking?
She's saying, should we include it as a budgetary requirement? Like, should that be in policy? But I know we've already said we're going to do the audit pieces part earlier, so, I don't know if that's just implied, but for me, it, it made sense. But I don't know what others want to say. Or legally, if we're allowed to do that.
I, I, I am assuming, I have not had this conversation with Raquel, but I'm assuming her, her concern would be, let's say, that the, the budget passes after significant cuts or cuts in some way, shape, or form, and this isn't an area that's, that's budgeted, and now you sort of have that conflict in between this policy and what your budget is. And again, I, that, I'm just assuming that without having spoken to Raquel.
Could you say?
Another option is, you know, if you want to do a diversity audit, that's what you're talking about. And it's just an expense for the one year, you can use your undesignated fund to do that rather than to make it part of your operational budget. Year after year after year.
Okay.
That's an option.
So, should I change that language at all? Resources shall be set aside in the district budget to allow for implementation? Or, resources shall be considered when planning the school district budget, or something like that?
From a legal perspective, I would of course prefer resources to be considered only because it gives some level of flexibility, but also understanding that, that flexibility could need to inaction, I guess.
Exactly. And there are specific items that are implemented in this policy, like training. Ongoing training is something that the policy dictates, there has to be funding for that.
Yeah. I agree. I was getting to say there has to be some funding, a lot of it to whatever resources that are coming up out of this policy.
And, and this covers special ed, this covers everything, this is the whole policy as a whole. So, yeah.
So, yes, to keep it in as written, thus far, okay. And if we get any other feedback or input, we can revise.
Certainly something that the, the full committee gives us.
Okay, no questions about? So, page eight, foundational principles, nothing significantly changed here. We defined members of the community to just make it a little more specific, students and professionals, indicating who that is, that can be changed if folks want to be, but that was our suggestion. And number four, there are some other policies that have more detailed procedures than what ours does, but that's, this is what the original, I highlighted it just to ask that question, but this is the original language. As well as in number five, someone had asked us to define, potentially define parents and guardians if we felt there was a need to do that, but legally, if it's fine as it stands, those were the suggested comments in that area. So, section six, reporting, the top of, the bottom of eight and the beginning of nine. Any comments in there?
So, four, I, I don't have any comments on. But, but five, I would, I mean, we want, it's not just the students who are encouraging to report, we want anybody, everyone and anybody to report, so.
So, do you want any other?
I mean, I, I would assume that if anybody.
Everybody affiliated with the district.
Well, I mean, even the community, though.
Us, directors, monitors, whatever.
Yeah.
Historians.
How do I write that? Any member of the South Kingstown community, or like, how do we write that?
Those are the South Kingstown.
It sounds like it's considered professional.
Okay. Open to your edits, friends, trying to, trying to keep up with you all. So, I'm just going to strike through that, and then we can look at it to see if you're happy with that. Oh, okay. Any member of South, of South Kingstown is encouraged? And then on to reporting procedure. Just some small questions in here as well, to make sure that we have an online reporting forum, which is something that I don't think that we currently have, but that's something that we need to create when this policy, if and when this policy becomes adopted and in where that lives. So, I wanted to keep that question there as a reminder to us, again, the accountability piece. The, when we talk about appropriate personnel, district personnel, highlighting who that means, our superintendent, building level leaders, in terms of who receives these comments or feedbacks. So, highlighting that, because before it just said appropriate, so trying to define that a little bit more. And if there are suggestions, please let me know. And I'll scroll to four and five, same thing. If someone is not comfortable necessarily reporting directly to a building leader, perhaps they can go directly to central administration, superintendent. Just want to clarify that, again, some other policies say these things, just wanted to make sure that that's appropriate for SK, comments around the table.
I think you should include the, the human resource administrator.
Would you like it in?
They handle, they handle all those complaints now prior to the information coming to the superintendent.
Okay. Grab that in. Any other comments in there?
Can you just read me what you wrote in there? I can't see it.
I wrote, "and" human resources, both under three and four, as another source to say, because it had said, "report to the appropriate personnel", and so it says superintendent, building level leaders, and human resources as options for folks to report through. And if they're not comfortable going through a direct building level leader, it says school district personnel, superintendent, and/or human resources. Going on to page ten, and we're getting close, friends, looks at investigation. The language here said any SKSD affiliated person. Thank you, my running low on batteries there. Thank you for letting me, where does this plug in? Come on here, please. Thank you. Student, parent, guardian, or professional, so again, making it as broad as possible. And looking at the language, just minor changes in there. Any comments or questions on A? Okay, and then the resolution procedure. We did have one, no, no, it said third parties, we're just wondering, maybe we could get you to weigh out, who, who does that mean? Employees in third parties may initiate informal resolution. We just didn't know who the third parties meant. Not something we necessarily need to change at this table, but just wanted some clarification.
So, typically a concerned citizen, someone from, from outside the school community who learns something second or third hand, that's easily to bring that information forward.
Okay, perfect. So, that had been a question in there. So, anything else about procedure in B? Nothing was changed? Okay. And C, formal resolution procedure at the bottom of ten and going through eleven, nothing changed in that section. Under C. Unless folks want to talk about any of that? And termination. D, looks at the reporting process. Where it goes to, I did ask, you know, is this someone's job responsibility, human resources, Title IX, et cetera? We can clarify those reporting lines, but this is the original language and conversation that was in the policy. Okay, so that remains the same. Going on to the last page, E, appeals. We had asked, just a clarification, who our Title IX coordinator is, and that is Raquel Teller and our CFO at the moment. So, that was just a question for internal conversation within the committee and making sure that that's documented, but there were no other changes in that section under E. Okay. F, no changes. And then reporting to outside agencies, I don't believe there were any changes as well. So, I'll try and read those up so folks can look at that. So I'll try and read those up so folks can look at that. If there's any other comments. That brings us to the end of what we had written. Okay, so for the sake of discussion this evening, what we would want to do, if we are at a point to do this, is to make a motion to move it forward as amended this evening to the school committee. Take a vote on that, if there's any discussion, we can have that, and then record the results. And then we would pause and move to our next item of business, which would be an opportunity to, there are some suggested next meetings and steps, but these are things that will be on the agenda for next week. And we would move to community comments.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the anti-racism, anti-discrimination, and anti-harassment policy as suggested this evening, to move it forward to the whole school committee.
I'll make the second pass.
Okay. Is there any discussion, we have a motion on the floor, yes?
Can there be community comment before we vote on it?
We're in the middle of a motion, so potentially, should we hold that off and have comment first?
If you want to reset that motion and then move community comment up and then revisit the motion, you can certainly do that.
Okay, if folks want to do that, sure. So I know we were at an hour and a half, thank you for your patience. And if we want to move to that agenda again, community comment, we'll open the floor. We again ask that folks are respectful and follow the normal procedures that our chair puts out. And you have up to three minutes, please feel free to stay in line with what is on the agenda this evening. If you are going over, we'll let you know that and ask you to move on to the next person who might want to speak. And again, if you're choosing not to speak out loud tonight, you are welcome to share comments with me directly, as well as anyone else who is part of the committee also.
I just want to procedurally make a motion to move community comment up in the agenda.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Kate. So that motion passes and we will move to community comment, if someone would like to go first, feel free. And if you would please introduce yourself so that we can record that information.
Yeah, it's a good, you know, it's a good evening, it's a Taylor Ellis. I just wanted to kind of go back to some of the early discussion and to a point that I think Becky had made. It seems like there's a need for a district, and I kind of, this is a good language, but like the district should form a district-wide social justice and, you know, equity committee composed of stakeholders with a majority voting members who are BIPOC or members of, you know, other underrepresented groups, you know, historically, and also include three members of the proven beloved community advisory board. This group would promote and support the formation of school-based social justice and equity groups to better serve the needs of each school and then also working on district ways to really implement this policy and change the culture in the schools. The district committee will monitor the implementation of this policy and make recommendations on an annual or more frequent basis to the South Kingstown School Committee. The district committee will also be a place where victims of discrimination can bring their complaints if those victims do not feel like they can do that at the school or district level. So those are just, you know, trying to, you know, take from some of the different things that people brought up.
Thank you. Hi, still there?
Are you recognizing me?
Yes, please.
Hi, thank you, I'm Jonathan Sigmund, I'm a school social worker here in the district. Thank you so much for being here tonight, all of you fine people here in the room and for your engagement. I'm very excited about this policy, a lot of pieces in it are amazing. I'm going to go back to the exact same piece that Taylor was talking about. I was, amongst the things that I really like about this policy were this piece of each school shall organize a standing social justice and equity committee. I just want to really emphasize, Kate, can I call you Kate? Thank you, I don't really know you, thank you.
You've dealt with my children, it's fine.
I, your point is well taken about equity happening amongst the buildings. The buildings are different, though, like just the physical plants are different. So, I know some of them are literally identical, but, you know, there's pieces that are different in each building. And in addition, the cultures are different in each building, and the needs are different in each building. So, to me personally, I really think it's important for us to have very individualized committees standing to address the needs of each building. And I really like the word "shall". I don't love "will be encouraged", because "will be encouraged" to me sounds like it's not going to happen. But "shall organize a standing social justice and equity committee" sounds exactly, and Dr. Blau, I think you read the sit policy just a few minutes ago, and I think I heard you say that each school shall have a sit team, right? It's a sit, it's not a sit team, because then it'd be a team team. So, and I think "shall" should be here too. And the reason I think "shall" should be here too is because if no teachers say, okay, I'll be on the sit team, I'll help out with that, I mean, who does it fall to? The principal? I mean, the school will still have a school improvement team, and it will be just devoid of these business leaders or teachers or whomever. And teachers really do sign up for all kinds of things, and so, you know, usually, I don't think it does fall to just the principal, but the point is, teachers are not obligated, the school is not required by law to find teachers to be on the school improvement team, nor is it required to find what?
I think they are.
Well, what happens if no teachers come? I mean, teachers don't, teachers are not required to volunteer.
We won't find that answer, just keep going.
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, I think, I think we should be very forceful about saying, yes, you, each building, you do need to set up this committee. And if it doesn't happen because no one is there, that's unfortunate, and maybe that's something we need to look at and think about how we can make it happen. So, yeah, I think that's what I had to say, I really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Others would like to go, I'll just go straight through, yes?
Yes, thank you, I'm Ilana Rose, serving in Perryville. And I'll echo what you all said. And I would like to add, I think that, you know, taking out the BIPOC advisory board is very last, I don't know. I think that there needs to be something in here saying that it will be established in a way that is appropriate, because it's kind of, you know, last minute, the pronounced finding, I'll speak for myself, that it just, it seems like that was a procedural, like accident, that the beloved community wasn't implemented in a correct way. So then you should put it in the policy that it needs to be implemented in a correct way.
Can I correct that? It wasn't implemented in a accidental way, it was implemented in an illegal way. That's what, I'm sorry to make people.
Okay, so what I'm saying is it should be implemented in an illegal way.
I'm putting it out there, man, because I need people to understand that, okay? And so, we don't personally have anything against the advisory board. I was a member of it when it was first born, okay? And because I'm here, I had to take a step back because of the context. And so, I just want to be clear that it's.
Can I, can I ask us just to focus in? Thank you for the comment, I just want to make sure this is community time, that we're able to let you speak your piece, and then we'll, we will process that as folks go through.
I don't mean it as an attack on anyone, I just mean that it should be done in a correct way. And I think that that can be included in the policy. So that it can.
Thank you. Next?
I also am focused on that same piece about schools. And I guess for me, having an outside group that actually knows what we're talking about. And I think when we look at the BIPOC community, they're credentialed because they actually have experience with this, what we're talking about here, right? And so I can talk about, and it's funny because of the, you know, we've been, emails have been flying around, right? And so I've met or spoken with a lot of people and a lot of people of color, and we all have similar stories. And we have, all have similar stories in the way that it wasn't addressed, right? So we went through, spoke to, followed procedures, right? When my children were having difficulty, I went and spoke to the principal, I went and spoke to the bus company. It didn't get resolved. My daughter got sent to the front of the bus, you know, when, when a boy was telling a story about lynching, telling a joke about lynching and not using black people, using the N-word, and my daughter was told that she was a baby for snitching on this child, she got removed to the front of the bus. And that child didn't have any, or I wasn't told what the consequences were, but my, for me, restored a justice. Find out what lynching actually is, if you think that story is so funny to say why apples and N-words are good hanging from a tree. You know? And that was the consequence, the principal didn't do anything, that child rode that bus every day. And then I finally was able to find someone to actually drive my daughter to school because I couldn't believe that the principal didn't do anything with this child, because, or that I knew of, right? There were no consequences, the child was still back in school every day, the child was still riding the bus every day, but my child was sent to the front of the bus to call the baby. When my son wanted to, brought up February Black History Month and asked a social studies teacher at another school, what we were doing for Black History Month, the social studies teacher told him that if he wanted to put something together, that he would be able to put something together, the teacher would look it over, and that he could teach it. And my son reminded him that he was not the teacher, that that would be his responsibility to do that. And so, I could go on, I could get to the high school now, right? We can talk about these stories, because they live in every school. And in every school, parents are doing what they need to be doing, children are doing. I mean, I'm hearing stories about the high school, and children of color getting locked in the bathroom and being searched because they're in the bathroom, going to the bathroom? And we're, you know, and, and because they're children of color, I can talk to my children, my children know the hallway where you can hang out, where the kids of color can hang out and not get into, and nobody notices. We overlook them. We notice in the hallway, when you walk in the hallway, and it's not just the black kids or the children of color that notice this, white kids notice this too. You know, and so who has a pass, who doesn't have a pass, who's allowed to go in the hallway, who's not allowed to get in the hallway? If you don't put something in here that is some, a group like the BIPOC who have experience, who actually have gone through, most of us have done something to better have knowledge to figure out how to solve these problems, how to work. We're in the community, we are the community, we're in the schools, we're seeing it. Children come to us. But you're saying that, no, it's fine to just put it in the sit plan? The sit plan is, everything in the sit plan goes to scores, right? So we're answering, so we have SEL, we have an SEL plan, we have a plan for, you know, our RICAS scores, and we have a plan for one other thing. I'm on sit, I can see what's going on. It's, it doesn't really have a place. There are goals that are aligned to sit, but there's no goals for what to do when your child has called the N-word and someone, or the teacher sticks their hand in your child's face and says, "I can't deal with you." I don't know, I guess I'm, and I'm not, I'm probably not being as clear, and I'm not being as clear as I want to be, but that's because all of these emotions are being brought up in me right now. And so I can't speak as clearly as maybe the email that I sent to you, Melissa. But I do know, what I do, what I can say is that there needs to be an outside group that works with the school when these issues come up. And children can trust those people, because right now, our schools are failing the kids. The kids don't trust the teachers or the vice principal or the dean of students, because nothing is changing. And it hasn't changed, you know, in the, I'm fifty-five, you know, I went to Little Mattoonik School, I went to the little tiny schoolhouse. It hasn't changed. And so I guess you can say that we want to change, but until you actually get people that are invested in that change and they're in that group, doing that work, I don't see this policy having teeth. And so I really think we should keep that in here. I know I have over three minutes, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, I looked down and noticed that, but I didn't want to stop you in the middle of your thought, but thank you for sharing.
Hi, my name's Katie Collins, and I think we all had the same reaction. Thank you, first of all, I'm really encouraged by the conversation here and the back and forth. I understand the legal implications of wanting to get it right and making sure that everything is set up correctly. But I too have had experiences where I've brought concerns forward to principals, teachers, superintendents, and I'm just placated. I had this recent back and forth with the principal at the high school, and, you know, I asked very specific questions and his response was, "thank you for your email, have a nice day." And I was like, my email was this long and it was concerns about the scavenger hunt, which I don't know, and have you heard about that, about racially apparent tone that was taken in the scavenger hunt? And he never addressed, I went back about six times, and he never addressed, he said, "well, I'm sorry that we're, I guess we're going to have to agree to disagree." So, I feel like there's a lot of people, as we're all saying, there's a lot of people in the community who have lost trust that anyone within the schools are going to take their concerns seriously. And, you know, I'm saying this as a white woman with blond-haired, blue-eyed kids, that, you know, I don't, I know that I'm not even privy to account of what's going on, but I've seen what I've seen. And I read the, you know, racially apparent tone, I mean, I just, when he wrote, when the principal wrote that and didn't, was surprised that there would be any sort of reaction to that, and just put me off, I had a real problem with that. So again, I'll just echo what everybody's saying, if there's some way to put it, you know, to get it right, Paula, to get it right and to have it official, but the, you know, set it up as a subcommittee where people can sit on it, but it has to be, it just has to be, because this is great, but as you have said, Katie, it has to be implemented, and that has to be a piece of it, it has to, has to. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I'll probably ask a question, commit to a question. May I just, you have to, now I guess it, now I guess I can't remember. I, I'll just, again, I'm kind of just reiterating what many have said here today. No question, you know, racism takes place in this town, in this school, we all know this. We have the opportunity to make a difference, to actually make a change and actually move forward in a whole new direction set forth so that we can, you know, bring forth some equity amongst all of us and for our children and our futures, you know, and their future. Yeah, you know, this policy has just been brought here maybe a year or so. But we're talking four hundred years, four hundred years of this norm continuing to go on. So why are we still asking four hundred years later for what we know is exist? So, when we put this policy... So, when we put this policy together, there are certain things that have to kind of go in there. Whether it's legally, however we get it to go there in the proper fashion. But we do know those identities, however you want to say it, of those, end of, those uh, ethnicities, those, that, that, those diverse groups, peoples are being discriminated against. So let's not act like it's, it's not happening. So let's move forward, you know, in a way where we all can hear and move forward together. And we have that opportunity. Let's not miss it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to take three minutes. First of all, I just wanted to thank you, everybody. This was a really nice discussion to stop, to stop and listen to and comb through. Um, mine had also went to the schools and the differences between all of the schools. And that's besides the floor plan of a couple, um, obvious. So what, one thing I thought is that it would be under a district umbrella. Each school shall have um, a committee. But then designated people or what have you from those committees, from the separate schools, get together under district supervision and exchange notes. Because there might be a student that moves into Mattoonik, and that Mattoonik committee can get some good words of wisdom from West Kingston. So to have those teams maybe get together sometimes, they might be able to problem solve, help each other a little bit, was a thought that I had when I was hearing you. And it sort of just brings it full circle. It starts with the district, it goes into the different schools, and then it would come back under district supervision and the um, supervision of the Beloved Committee. Um, and second of all, really simple, um, item D on page eleven, within a reasonable amount of time, I think it might, is a little late. If it might get spelled out somewhere else here, but a reasonable amount of time to me doing paperwork might be a very good thing to story. So, no less than, maybe put a cap on that somewhere.
Can you, where, where is it?
It is, um, item D determination, um, number three. Within a reasonable amount of time, I just think is a little late. Is that a month? Is that a week? Is that forty-eight hours?
Yeah, but it also says.
Yeah, it's just a little bit.
Yeah, but that's, that one step.
Oh, okay.
It's just that one step. I was looking at it, trying to angle to myself. Because when it comes to paperwork, my reasonable amount of time is probably twice what yours is. So, thank you. You guys did a nice job tonight.
Thank you. Lisa? Yes, next. Any others?
If there's nobody else that wants to speak, I'd like to say something.
Okay. We're closing community comment and going back to the folks at the table? Okay.
I, I have something to comment.
Okay, so you can both go, Paula, and then Johnny can go.
Um, only because.
So I just, I just want to make it clear to everyone that's sitting here. I, I always thought the scope of this policy was well, uh, well-written, okay? But however, I felt like when we began to reference a certain group, or groups of people, that we were looking at a policy that was leaving some ghosts out. So, to me, in order to make this policy be all-inclusive, we needed to take the reference of the groups out of the policy and leave the scope of the policy as it's written. Because it is a good policy. It's something that we do need here. And as I said in the beginning when we had our first meeting, we can make policies all day long. It's about implementing them and enforcing them to get the results from the policy. So I'm gonna end my statement with this. If the only reason that you will not move to push this forward is because we took out reference in groups, then you are not in here supporting all. That's my statement.
Johnny?
I just wanted to support what people have to say about a better um, reporting mechanism. And I wanted, there were a couple of people who couldn't be here tonight, and they wanted me to read a statement. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'm gonna tell you what's in it, because I think it's important. What's in it? Um, this is from, um, she doesn't mind me, she wanted me to read it. Um, Charlie David Spears. And she's been a member of our advisory um, group. And she talked about her daughter, and she talked about her son. And in both cases, the teacher for her daughter and the, the dean for her son, which happened actually today, I think, just didn't give any credence to what the student had to say. And in the case of what, what Michelle mentioned about the bathrooms, about blocking kids in there so that they could be searched, um, it just seems unacceptable and illegal. And these things that are happening when people, both of these examples are at the high school. We've had incidents reported to us, different incidents reported about once a week in the past six weeks, that things are getting so out of hand at the high school. And they don't, the, the parents don't feel as though they have any recourse. The staff members don't feel as in, as if they have any recourse because as one of the staff members said, "I might be reporting this to the friend of somebody who actually perpetrated the bad behavior." And so, I'm, I'm not sure that we need to hold up the policy per se, but we need to, we need to put something in it so that there's a place to report that isn't just within the sort of relationship of the, the school department. Because that, it just hasn't been working. It just hasn't been working. And I just wanted, um, I just wanted to make sure you knew that it's going on right now.
Thank you. Becky?
Um, I have a couple of things to say. I've been going back and forth today over whether this is the appropriate place, but I have a seat at this table, and so I'm going to say it. Um, last year, the school committee made a commitment to the community to become an anti-racist school district, to implement anti-racist policies. One of those being an advisory board. I understand that there is a problem or there's contention about how that advisory board came to be, but that's not on the members of the board. That's on the people in the districts that put together that committee. So, um, I feel like if the school committee is still committed to this work, we have to be brave in implementing policies that are strong um, and uh, have, can be implemented, and that have accountability, that hold people accountable, and have actionable items. Um, one of those being a, a, a board of people that will help advise the, the school district on things that they're not, I mean, clearly, because of all the stories that we've heard. The folks who exist in the committee, or in the, um, not in the school committee, but in the community of the district, administrators, um, many of the teachers, they just don't have the lived experience to make a call when it comes to these types of policies. So, there needs to be some sort of advisory board, whether or not like, I mean, I understand that it wasn't put together in the way that it was supposed to have been, but, but the onus is on y'all. Like, you need to make it work. Um, and there are a couple of things I feel that, that go along with that. That the importance of the committee isn't just to help advise on policy, but it's also to give folks a place to go when they don't trust the people who are making decisions in the district. Um, because we're all stronger in community. Um, and I feel like that's what the Beloved Community Advisory Board has been to me. I joined it because my, my own son, like, still suffers trauma at the hands of what happened um, in the school district and the, the administrators that were responsible for that at the high school. Um, I can't even get him to come with me to, to um, a school committee meeting to tell his story because he's still so, because it was in the high school and he's still so traumatized. He doesn't want to sit down there. Uh, so I want to encourage us to be brave, um, to move forward with this policy. It just, it needs to, to be in place. Um, I feel like as a member of this body, that I can make a motion um, to.
Yes, you may.
Uh, remove, to change the language back to "shell" from "encourage" um, for, so I, I want to do that, um, specifically for the, um, school groups.
I'm gonna put it in here, and then we'll have a motion and a second and a vote, and go from there. Um, once we make the change, if, if folks want to assume that that's what the language will be. The district shall organize. Is that what your vision that you?
Yes. I feel like once the, the, this becomes policy, that people will gather around it. They'll have something that, you know, supports them, and they can say, "Oh, we have, this has to happen, so we're going to do it," and they'll take responsibility for doing it. And if they don't, then, you know, it's on the school, it's on us to make it happen. Or not us, but like, on each individual school, but also on the district. I really love um, your idea about sort of this cyclical, like interconnectedness. Because of course, all of the schools are interconnected. One school feeds into the next, that feeds into the next. So why not have individual school groups, but also conversation among, um, among these groups?
So we have a motion on the floor to make that change. Um, and, and, and I don't know that we need a motion. We would make it to accept it as the document is written. But is there any other comments back to that suggested change?
I just want to make sure what the change is. The district shall.
Organize a standing social justice and equity committee. I wrote advisory groups. I don't know the exact name right now, but just.
Yeah, and putting it back to what's in our, our copy. She had, she had put in the.
Each school?
In the workings that she had changed.
I can't see it. You'll have to read it.
It says, "The district shall organize a standing social justice and equity committee advisory group." If you want me to put at each school on the end of that, that's something.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other proposed changes or discussion?
When we put that we'll have um, a representative or a subgroup at each school. So we have um, one body that has separate school um, entities.
All right, I don't know. I'm saying with representation from each school?
From or at.
From or at?
Yes.
Which one is from?
Oh, no.
Have representation at each school.
At each school.
I think if you make it measurable, a committee that meets once, twice annually, once a month, like if you put sort of a measurable um, frequency for where that, where that group will meet and have district committee oversight.
Yeah. Just gonna pause because we went back to the table, so thank you for the comment, but that's okay. Um, I'm going to ask this body with the changes that have been made, the document that has been amended, do we have a motion at this point on the floor to accept the policy as amended and advance it to school committee? And if so, if someone is willing to make that motion, I would appreciate it.
Make the motion to accept, for this body to accept the policy as amended and move it forward to our full school committee at the next business meeting, December fourteenth.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
Do we have a second? And, and again, anyone who's at the table voting can do that. Um, so do we have any discussion further? Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay, any abstention? Okay, motion passes, and this will move to school committee again.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth is what we have slated, and we'll ask our leadership to make that happen, so.
Before we adjourn, can we make clear why it's December fourteenth and not tomorrow?
To our leaders, yes, if folks want to do that?
Can, can, so, December seventh is not an official school committee business meeting. It's, it is a special community forum hearing that was created specifically around our facilities and redistricting and reconfiguration and budget and things of that nature. So the official business, school committee business meeting is December fourteenth, which is why this policy won't be here tomorrow night, it will be here on the fourteenth.
But I will echo, if you have not yet seen the announcement about the seventh, I think there is a lot of things that relate to the work that we're doing in policy. And hope that you will look to it, hear from Dr. Palada on the seventh and the fourteenth, to be able to know about some of the strategic vision, about the, the building committee, about the budget, and I'm missing one, and about redistricting, reallocation of spaces. Very important conversations that we want community input into and need. Um, so please know that that, everyone is invited to participate in those conversations. Um, so that being said, on item number four, I just asked that if anybody would like to again, put forward additional business items for next week's meeting. We do have a meeting on the books for next Monday. And we have been asked to look at budget and the school improvement policy. Again, trying not to overwhelm us, but those are two pieces that we've been asked to prioritize. Um, and then we will look at future agenda meetings going forward, what makes sense for the holidays and the, and the winter break. Um, so that being said, I will call for a motion to adjourn. Anyone would like to make that? Thank you so much. Do we have a second? Thank you. All, that motion passed. All in favor, I should ask. Thank you, Andrew. All right, thank you, and thank you so much for your answer, everyone, tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here.